As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the current chair for the Newberry Planning Board. Tonight is March 16th, 2022, and let me confirm that all board members and persons anticipated on the agenda. Our president could hear me. A planning board member is when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Leslie Matthews.
Eric.
Thank you. Woody Knight.
President.
Thank you, Mary Stone.
Yeah.
Thank you, town staff. When I call your name, please also respond in the affirmative. Arthur Taylor.
Here.
Thank you, Emily Noble.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Now Steve is not going to be with us or Eric, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Steve Sawyer.
I don't see him yet.
Okay, Mark DePiero.
And he is here.
Okay.
Yep, and just to confirm, George Morris is absent.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Good evening. This is March 16th, 2022. Opening of the Newberry Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with an act relative relative to extend certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Thirty, section 20 until April 1st, 2022. This order spends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly physical locations and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newberry Planning Board is commuting via video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website in which identifies how would the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering a meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating in my video in our telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local cable access channel nine on Zoom and on www.tncctv.org and recording will be available through the Newberry Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior for meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state the intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure equipment inside. As a chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attending except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with the star six to toggle to mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screenshot your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until you yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do through through the chair, taking care to identify yourself if you wish to speak. With your guys' public comment, the opportunity for public commenting questions during our public hearings. After the board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function of a video conference participants to raise your hand hover, I'm sorry hover or in the bottom of the Zoom window by the forward gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed for the participant list. You may rename yourself by going to the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your key phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called upon to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your handle will be loaded when you have been given the floor for questions. I will then continue down the list of those when the race hand column and again ask a participant applicant or the representatives to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Just to confirm each vote, the seating will be taken by roll call. All right, let me minimize that and let me pull up our agenda. So we can probably start with our liaison reports. So Leslie, do you want to start off with a quick summary of our most recent select board?
Okay. Um, it was a feisty select board meeting, to say the least. There was, it was hard to figure out if anything actually got accomplished with some of the things that were going on. The Larkin Road is still under conversation. The neighbors are, don't want it to be a throughway still for safety reasons. Just they would prefer to compromise with just have it as an emergency route. It was without going into any real great detail because it was a very, very difficult leading to Sithrow with some bad feelings at the end of the meeting and that was too bad. It was really too bad considering the the topic of conversation. It was just, it was kind of heartbreaking. Anything other than that, as far as business, as far as the planning board, there really isn't anything. Anything to bring you up to date on as far as that's concerned.
Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Leslie. ZBA, Larry.
Their regular monthly meeting is tomorrow night. They'll be reviewing a couple of draft decisions. One is for a special permit and findings to raise a building and construct a new dwelling at two 40th Street. The other is at for project at eight 12th Street in order to build a shed on a lot with over 20% coverage. Also, they, I have on the agenda an executive session to discuss Seacoast T9, Seacoast K9. But of course, beyond that, I don't have any more information on that. So that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much, Larry. Speak briefly about conservation. Conservation, we met last evening. We had a presentation from a representative from the feds as well as state regarding the proposed, it was a presentation regarding the Parker River dam and what will be necessary over the ensuing years. So it's kind of an introductory recap of what took place in the past. And this project goes back at least 10 years. And so there was a lot of history to gather from that. And it'll be a stage process, which will be going through a number of phases and there's going to be some materials that will be submitted by DER over the next months and then that'll lay the groundwork for the next few years as well going with that project. There's a number of different segments because there's a segment regarding 95, there's going to be DOT, there's going to be Army Corps of Engineers, there's going to be a lot of different players involved in this process. So it looks to be very good and there's a lot of resources that will help with this process. So that was the biggest component, I think, from last night's meeting. Just to make sure, looking at my notes here. I think that's pretty much it. And they're working also on a bylaw amendment and we'll see where that comes. Because it's going back and forth with discussions and comments from legal. That's what I have. Martha, do you have anything for?
Not tonight. The commissioner's meeting is tomorrow.
Okay, beautiful. All right, then let's see if we can continue along our agenda. We have a few. Yes, Mary.
May I ask Leslie a question about the, her, the meeting, the selectman's meeting? So actually, oops. Leslie, you said, I just didn't get the bottom line, or maybe it's intrinsic in what you said, but is the emotional meeting was about the responses from those in the, in the audience, correct? Those asking questions, the public?
It was a subject matter that was brought up under new business. What was brought up? Yeah, it was brought up under new business. And people had gotten up and spoken some citizens' concerns and got it got a little out of order.
And whoever's bag. I'm just curious.
It's, that is available for review, right Martha? That's a great.
Yeah, I think, and Mary, just to clarify, it was not, it was not regarding Larkin Road, if that's your question.
Wasn't regarding Larkin Road?
No, it was regarding Larkin Road.
Okay, just the meeting itself?
It was after the Larkin Road people didn't, they got up and made their point.
Got it.
Concerns.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, thanks. Thanks, thank you.
All good questions. Thank you very much, Mary. Martha, we have about four, four or five minutes before our public hearings. Do you want to start with the planners' report, the planning directors' report?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I don't really have a lot to report on tonight, but we have had to, I think I mentioned this last time, we've had two pre-construction meetings over the last two weeks. Last week was the pre-construction meeting for the Governor's Academy, the Parker River Environmental Studies Building. And the appeal period ended on Monday, so that's done. They picked up the decision that's been recorded and they're proceeding with with work. We had a good meeting with their site construction manager who has been very responsive in sending us a schedule of work. So I think that will be moving along, you know, as you know, they've got a relatively, I don't want to say aggressive, but you know, a good schedule trying to move forward on that one. And then on Tuesday, this Tuesday, we had a pre-construction meeting with John Collin Tony and Bill Manuel and John's site guide regarding construction at the 108 Main Street subdivision, which was approved quite a while back. So they are planning to start tree clearing move and moving forward either at the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
There was some minor stuff today and they have, they've already started to place their equipment to get the process started.
Oh, good. That's right. You're right there, aren't you?
Thank you, Leslie.
So, but they've got the erosion control down and they've marked out limits of work and that kind of stuff, so that should be, that should also be moving forward.
Okay, great. We have about two minutes before we're going to start our public hearings. Anything else, Arthur?
Not that I can think of at the moment.
Let me see if there's anything I can backfill here. Did you want to say something, Woody?
I had a quick question. It's not on the agenda, but do they extend in the guidelines for Zoom meetings or? Does that?
Yeah, that, that, I should have sort of corrected the announcement about that. My understanding is that that's been extended until July 15th. So I don't, I don't have the, the number of the legislation or act that actually extends, but I will find that out.
Just in time for another.
Because I remember the deadline being April or something.
It was, it was April, originally April 1st, and that has been extended. So good question. Thanks for asking that.
Very good question. Thanks, Woody.
Thank you, Woody. And so it'll be July, which should work out just will continue with our current format. Okay, just about 7:15. So we have two public hearings that were scheduled for this evening. And the one, the first public hearing is going to be a public hearing continuance for the proposed zoning amendment to delete a chapter 97 for wireless communications over the district in its entirety and replace it with a new chapter on I74 that see with wireless communication facilities, which revised and new provisions regarding wireless communication towers, wireless communication facilities, small wireless facilities modifications and eligible facilities permitting and definitions. Nothing. Do we have some minor modifications to this draft that we need to discuss?
Um, we do. So just in a nutshell, and then I will pull this up on my screen. After the meeting last week, there were some, you know, some, or not last week, but the last session, there were some loose ends to be tied up. Our consultant, David Maxon, went through and cleaned some of it up, you know, just sort of making things consistent, like once wireless communications towers have been introduced using the acronym consistently after that. But there were a couple of other things, one of which was trying to clarify since there's mention of site plan review as well as special permit, exactly how that how that works. There's been some some revisions back and forth with David and Lisa, not nothing substantive from what was originally advertised, but I will share my screen and just kind of go through them briefly, if I may.
Thank you.
So are you able to see this?
There we are, yes.
Okay, and I will try to make it just a tad bigger.
Thank you.
How's that?
It's good.
Okay, so I've highlighted here actually David's comments about some of the changes that were made. And most of, most of the changes, things here in blue are his either from previously or the most recent round. And as I said, a lot of them are just kind of clearing it up, making things consistent. But there were a few things that comments regarding site plan review and he had also amplified the decision criteria a little bit. And this is one with the board's permission. I will rearrange a little bit because he mentions here wireless communications facilities, but a number of these criteria actually refer strictly to wireless communications towers, the WCTs. And so he suggested in a subsequent email, which I can read to the board or I will about a particular item is just reorganizing it to get the ones regarding towers together and the ones regarding all wireless communications facilities together. If that sounds reasonable. And he, the criteria were not in list forms previously, so that's what he did. He just put them in list form. Added the word only here to be crystal clear that these things go on the wireless communications tower district. And then there was some discussion about the planning board's ability to waive this requirement about overhead lines versus under underground lines and the limitation of towers to the tower district. And David is suggesting that the board be able to waive that requirement as opposed to having it be a variance. In his opinion, he believes that 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 gives a little bit more control if there's a variance than some of the decision criteria might not end up in the, in the, sorry, it's been a very long day. In the decision. So he just feels that having, having the ability of waiver is a better way to go. So I have not heard back from town council to the contrary on that. So I think that with the board's agreement, I would let this language stand. Let's see, I think this was a yeah, he suggested deleting this language as unnecessary. He's, he's added some language just to make it clear about eligible facilities requests. And then there's some additional language here regarding site plan review since the special permit and site plan review are noted, but it wasn't really totally clear. He's suggesting that we we add some language referring to the site plan review regulations. Lisa had added something previously and this kind of amplifies on that. What we might want to do in the future, which he suggests here, but we don't really have, we don't have time to do for this town meeting is is add some language to our site plan review bylaws specifically, you know, putting in wireless communications towers as a trigger. But this would be a way to deal with that in the meantime. Applications for new wireless communication towers shall include a personal wireless services provider as co-applicant. That was a new phrase. He's added a new phrase here about site and structure. If the owners are different regarding ownership. And he suggested limiting tree analysis to tower proposals. And balloon tests for towers. I think it was, we had it more general before that. He's added a phrase here about photo simulation photographs with focal length specifications. And again, targeting balloon test to towers only. This is just a superscript change. And he suggested removing capacity here. That's a question that hasn't been completely resolved, I think, but for, for now, I think taking his suggestion would be appropriate. And a little bit more about site plan review and special permit. This was a change to a butter notification to say that it should be done in accordance with requirements under Mass General Law 40A. And I had, he had inserted the section previously about small wireless facilities outside of rights of way and I had asked whether there should, it should be clear that inside rights of way would be under the purview of the select board and our consensus was that we don't need to mention that here. Lisa had provided some language regarding small cell facilities in rights of way as a general bylaw. So I've sent that on to Tracy. That's not, not anything that needs to go through public hearing. Some additional clarification regarding site plan review. More clarification language regarding existing, existing permit, federal law. Clarification on eligible facilities. Requests. Language was already in here. And this language was already here. Small wireless facilities definition was had already previously been added. So that's, that's basically it.
Thank you, Martha. You know, I think the board and the town is very fortunate to have David's wisdom and and expertise in writing bylaws and modifying bylaws for communities, which he's been doing for quite some time. And I think this has been a very helpful tool to have him here to with this process. I just want to see if the board members have any questions. Larry, do you have any questions, sir?
I don't.
Okay, Leslie, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Beautiful. Mary, do you have any questions?
No, I totally trust Dave. I really do. He's great. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Let's see, is there any one from the public president questions regarding this? If they could do the raise hand function and we can take a look. Do you see any questions, Martha?
I don't, but my screen is a little limited right now.
Okay, so we could probably stop.
Drop this down.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Beautiful. Thank you. And I don't see any hands raised. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the current document as discussed and amended and to be recommended for our warrant for the April 26th annual autonomy.
And so move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion of the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
That.
Say, Woody seconded, Larry made the motion, yep. Discussion, Leslie.
One.
Thank you. Woody, discussion? Thank you. Mary, discussion?
No.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
I do say yes.
Beautiful. And the chairs in favor as well. Wonderful. That will conclude that. And Martha, is there anything else you need from us regarding this?
No, I think I just need to close the public hearing.
Okay, Larry, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I moved to pose a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. There a second?
Yes.
Leslie, thank you for the second. A discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion, no, Woody?
None.
Thank you. Mary, discussion on the motion? Okay, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Chairs in favor as well. Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes that. Beautiful. We did have a second public hearing, which was going to be a continuance, and I believe we have been asked to continue that. Is that correct, Martha?
That's correct. We, there were a couple of things that still had not been discussed and the applicant contacted me this afternoon requesting to continue until April 6th.
Okay, just for clarification, this was the public hearing continues for a special permit application for ground mounted solar photovoltaic insulation of 75 Boston Road, Newbury, Lynnfield map R36 lot 27. The applicant was Alliance of Newbury. One LLC owner was town of Newbury. So I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to April 6th, 7:15 via Zoom.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Woody, for the motion. Leslie, was that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. A discussion of the motion, discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Thank you. Woody, discussion?
None.
Thank you. Leslie, discussion?
None.
Mary, discussion?
No.
Okay, how do you vote, Sir Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. How do you vote, ma'am?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel? Beautiful. Chairs in favor as well. Great. Okay, let me see where we are on our agenda. So continuing along our agenda, 105 High Road. Okay, Martha, we directed you to provide a decision regarding areas five through nine. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I do have that under all business, but we can certainly move that up.
Oh, beautiful. That'd be great because I think we should probably finish that and then we can go on to what we need to go on further. So let's, let's do that. So let's do a little recap of what we had. We had a discussion regarding units five through nine with regarding grading changes with, and they were deemed to be minor. And they met the intention of the approved plan of 20 eight, 27, 21. Okay, so Martha, can we see the decision that we drafted, please?
Sure.
Sure. All right, are you able to see that?
Yes, we might need to enlarge it a little bit.
Yes. Probably not that much.
Okay.
Well, it's good.
I'll get the door. Okay.
Do you want me to kind of walk through the outline here or what?
That would be appreciated. Sure thing.
Okay, so I essentially modeled this after, you know, public hearing decisions happen, you know, with the same, same sort of information. So what the, what the request was that the board voted on March twenty second to approve the requested modification to the OSRD grading drainage plan on sheet C one point two one and C one point two two with respect to exclusive use areas five, six, seven, eight and nine. You know, with reference to condition number five, which allows the board to, to deem certain change, certain kinds of changes to be minor modifications, not requiring a public hearing or a modification of the OSRD special permit. Just a summary of what they were requesting and the drawings that were submitted. And one of the things it was sort of reviewed against, which is condition eight, which states that all grading and exclusive use areas one through nine should be done in accordance with the approved OSRD green and drainage plan. Procedural history, the request was submitted on February twenty third. Copy of the plan and letter were submitted to our peer review engineer Joe, Joe Sirwodka for review and comment. Some previous versions of the plan had been submitted for review. One, which was actually a complete plan of all of the exclusive use areas, but they had been submitted informally, not to the board. And the request was placed on the March second agenda. Materials included were the letter, cover letter from Steve Sawyer, the plans and the technical review letter from Joe Sirwodka. The findings and determinations that the board made. It again reiterates the condition eight, what the requirement there was. For condition five, the board has the authority to allow modifications to the design layout of the structures and or infrastructure, which are determined to be minor modifications without a public hearing. And based on the board's review of the modification plan and on Mr. Sirwodka's assessment, which was that the revised ratings for units five through nine appear to meet the intent of the approved plans and differences appear to be minor. Stormwater appears to be conveyed as required on the approved plans. The board finds that the proposed revisions can be approved as a minor modification and do not require public hearing. And and the decision, this is approved, subject to the following conditions, which is approval is granted only for grading and related modifications to the exclusive use areas for units five, six, seven, eight and nine. No revisions for the gradient exclusive use areas one, two, three and four, nor any other revisions to the approved OSRD site plan are or were approved. Any changes and or revisions to exclusive use areas one, two, three and four, and any other revisions to the approved OSRD site plan dated August twenty seventh, twenty twenty two shall be submitted to the board for review and approval. Mr. Sawyer had said that a final landscape plan was being revised and that that needs to be submitted to the board for review and approval. Then the board reserves the right to consider any future proposed revisions together with the revisions approved herein as cumulative and or to reject any interim preliminary and or progress changes proposed by the applicant unless and until final changes are prepared and proposed so that the board has the opportunity to consider the effect of any proposed changes to the entirety of the project, the project and its approval and the related plans and conditions being integrated whole on a single parcel of land. And then this approval should not be effective until recorded in the appropriate registry of deeds, together with the referenced and incorporated plan sheets and proof of same as provided to the planning board. And then finally, in all other respects and except as explicitly provided herein, the approved OSRD condominium site plan dated August twenty seven, twenty twenty one shall continue to be in full force and effect and otherwise applicable to the development and use of the property. No approval of any other revisions or changes other than those explicitly set forth herein shall be implied or imputed. So that is the substance of it. And I know that there is one typo here. So it should be.
Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Perfect. All right, Martha, thank you for directing that and as well as reviewing it. I'm going to see if the board members have any questions or comments regarding this draft and its modifications. Larry, any comments or questions, sir?
I, I do not have any.
Thank you. Leslie, any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
Okay, Woody, any questions or comments?
None other than.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate that, Woody. Mary, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to approve the decision regarding grading changes for common areas five through nine as we have just reviewed.
I'll move.
Thank you, Larry, for the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Woody, for the second. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion, Woody?
None.
Discussion on the motion, Mary?
No.
Thank you. Larry, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mary, how do you feel about it?
Yes.
Wonderful. The chair is in favor of the motion as well. Okay, so I think that takes care of what we had discussed at our last meeting. Now I'm going to go back to our agenda as we had. And under new business, we have a request for approval for proposed grading and utility layout changes on exclusive use areas one, two, three and four as shown on OSRD grading slash drainage plan sheets C one dash twenty one and C one dash twenty two prepared by D I C. Hold on, pull that up. And it was paired at D C I and revised at three nine twenty two. And also we will have to look at the master deed, Declaration of Trust and Tri-Pacton Agreement. So Martha, what do we, where are we with this right now? What do we have before us?
Um, well, we do have a review letter from Joe, which you all have copies of. And he did, he noted some, some items of concern.
Right. So can we, Larry, I'm gonna have, have you kind of walk with me through this one? Can we kind of go through Joe's concerns? Can we, is it possible to share those concerns or summary of those concerns, Martha?
Um, yeah, I've got a summary here to help simplify, so.
Okay. Because the information was disseminated yesterday, folks, and it came through an email and with a number of attachments. And I just wanted to kind of drill down what, what we're looking at. So let's kind of enlarge that if we could. And these are going to be our town's peer reviews comments on what was submitted. Slide it over a little bit or maybe a tad smaller. Beautiful. Thank you.
Is that, is that okay?
Yes. Way better.
All right. So he noted that unlike the plan that we received for units five through nine, which showed both the approved grading as well as the proposed grading changes, the approved grading is not shown. So it's a little harder to see what the differences are between approved and proposed. He noted that the house footprints appear to be twice as large as those shown on the approved OSRD plan, roughly fifty five, fifty by fifty as opposed to thirty by forty. He noted that the exclusive use area boundaries are changed from the approved OSRD site plan. There are retaining walls now proposed in exclusive use areas one and two, which were not on the approved OSRD site plan. I said the walls are one to four feet high, approximately two hundred feet long overall. The wall on exclusive use area two is located right up against the cul-de-sac pavement, which could provide some plowing difficulties and doesn't make it possible to do any planting or landscaping in the face of the wall. He noted that no detail is shown for the walls. And he noted also that there are changes to the drainage swale. It's in the approved location or the location shown on the approved site plan, but the grading has been changed, so it does not work in a few places. On the upper side of exclusive use area two, the swell grade of thirty seven between contours thirty six and thirty eight is higher than the adjacent yard grade of thirty six point seven. The upper end of exclusive use area three, the swell grade of thirty three between contours thirty two and thirty four is higher than the adjacent driveway grades of thirty two point five to thirty two point nine four feet. And the proposed thirty eight to forty, thirty, twenty eight to thirty four swell contours were dragged twenty to forty feet down slope, requiring a berm to be installed above in the existing seven, seven foot wide easement. No such berm is shown on the approved plans, which again were the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty one plans. And just something that, that I noted, and this is actually true for the previous ones for five through nine. The base plan for the proposed changes is not actually the approved OSRD condo site plan, which was with the final revision date of eight twenty one, eight twenty seven, twenty one. The dates on the plan seem to be some other dates which don't correspond to that or to the approved plan. Original data revision dates. And Joe also suggested in his letter that the area that was recently excavated for sand, which was between the which was just to the, the west of the primary septic field. It would be good to have that shown. I know that the building inspector has requested that, and I don't know if he actually got that on a plan. So that's a summary of his, his letter.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let's leave that up.
You want me to, sorry.
No, that's okay. I guess, I, I think everybody had an opportunity to review that. Now, I guess the question that's before us, Larry, helping with this, is whether what's being proposed are minor modifications or major modifications. And that would, that's a discussion I think I need to entertain right now. I can get that. So we have house footprints that are twice the size. And so I want to get some direction from you, Larry, as to whether you think we're dealing with minor modifications or major modifications on what's being, been submitted and Joe has reviewed for us.
Honestly, Pete, I don't know. You know, if this ought to be classified as a major modification or a minor modification. We, the thing that, that strikes me the most is, is the comment about the grading change is not working. I, I don't know what that means for the drainage. I assume that, that that means that Joe has some, some issues with the drainage and I don't know what the fix is for those issues. So it's hard to make a determination if it's major or minor. As far as the other things go, that, I mean, they strike me that they can probably be, be resolved fairly handily. But I just don't know about the drainage.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on, Steve. I wanna, I wanna pull my board.
Okay, well, yeah, it is, I just, as far as grading, I'll, I'll chime in after.
Thanks.
But I, I had some comments on the grading.
Thanks. Woody, your, your feelings as to whether the five points that were summarized in Joe's letter, whether those are minor concerns or whether they enter into major concerns?
I'm not sure as well. I, I, I agree with Larry that some of the things can be fixed, but with the major grade and change on with the retaining walls and with Joe, Joe's comments that they, they don't, they won't work. Are I, I don't see that as what was presented earlier. I think that the they could be major changes, but I don't know.
Leslie, your thoughts as to whether this might be minor modifications or major modifications?
Well, are the drainage changes due to the fact that the footprint of the buildings has now enlarged? So that's going to change the drainage naturally? So if you're going to have instead of a thirty by forty and you're going to have a forty by fifty, isn't that going to change the natural root of drainage due to the fact that the building is larger? So is that why the drainage has been changed? So I'll look at it as a more of a major modification.
Mary, I'd like your opinion, if you just want to chime in as to whether you might think that this might be a minor modification consideration or a major modification consideration. Did I lose Mary?
She's muted right now for some reason.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'll, I'll chime in at this point. Joe's pointed out that we're, we're having the larger, larger structures being constructed than what was approved. We're having retaining walls that are being put into place which were not approved.
Mr. Chair, I do have, I do have a comment.
Steve, I want to be very careful here because if this is a major modification and we have to direct a public hearing, then we're going to have a discussion in the public hearing format.
But, but, but the, the comment that Joe made, I just grabbed, I went to the old plan and grabbed a footprint. And, you know, unit, I just grabbed unit six. And, you know, he, the, the square footage is twenty, the footprint is twenty seven hundred square feet of an exist, of the, of the approved, of the approved OSID plan. So he's reporting that we have a twelve hundred foot footprint. I just grabbed one. I got twenty seven sixty two. So using, you know, that, if you're basing it on the buildings are doubled in size, that's an error. They, they are not doubled in size.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, there are some walls that have been proposed, which were not on the OSRD site plan review. And there's some changes to our drainage swale, which were not approved on the OSRD plan. Martha, I just need to clarify, and Larry, you can probably help me with this too. With, with site plan review, which is different than subdivision, there isn't a process for modification. The decision as written is what guides this board. Is that correct, Larry?
I'm not quite. Could you repeat the question?
Sure, sure thing. You know, this is a site plan review. This is not a subdivision. And we kind of, through the iterations of this process over the many hearings, it kind of took, took the shape of, was it going to be a subdivision? And it ended up being a site plan review, and that's how the decision was written. So it is a site plan review. And under the site plan review, we're allowed to say whether there's an onsite modification of a minor technical that really can be done onsite, whether there's a minor modification where the board is comfortable that is this minor modification or whether it's a major modification which triggers a different threshold. So there isn't a process for modification in site plan review. We have to go by the decision as it's written. That's my understanding.
Right. I think it's that there, there isn't a process for modification under, under zoning.
Under.
Right. And so you know, as, as you said, originally, this was, this was discussed as being a subdivision. The decision was made during the process that it would be a condominium site plan instead, which is not a subdivision. It doesn't have individual lots. But is one kind of holistic site plan. And, and as you were saying, the, the decision is what really grants the, the kind of the modification process here. I think it's condition five that, that talks about that.
Right.
As to, you know, whether it's, it's a field change or whether it's a As to, you know, whether it's a field change or whether it's a minor enough change that it's sort of for information only, or if it's something that's, you know, that's more substantial or significant, which would require a public hearing.
Martha, what about the condition that referred to submitting the specific site plans for grading? There was actually a condition there also.
The, well, the condition that references grading is condition eight, which says that there shall be no changes to the approved grading and drainage plan.
Yes, and which we're not making any changes to the, if, if I had a chance. See, here's the issue. I was away last week. I didn't have a chance to review that plan prior to be submitted. We're trying to get that in timely. And I'm sure that I could, I could respond to previous, you know, similar to the previous comment that Joe had on the units five through nine. I could respond to his comments, modify the grading, so there would be no issues with the grading. Similar to the previous review of five through nine. And as part of condition eight, we're to submit grading plans for review by your peer review. And this is part of that process.
Right, Steve, we had something submitted. We had it reviewed. We're here to discuss that now, and I'm, you know, I don't have control of anybody else's schedule. I just have this board meeting twice a month when things are put on the agenda. And what's presented before the board is what we need to discuss.
Okay, and what I'm saying is, do we have a chance? We got Joe's comments yesterday afternoon. We really, we have less than, we have basically twenty four hours to, we haven't had a chance to respond to his comments to be presented to this meeting.
All right, then I'll give you
Which is typical, which is typical protocol.
It's wonderful if everything gets to us in time and that we can review everything in time. So I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion. If you'd like to continue this discussion, we can continue this discussion. And you can, if you'd like to respond to the comments, you can respond to the comments. But I have a question before my board right now, based on what has been submitted, what, and what our peer review has said, because again, I don't want to do back and forth.
Well, Mr. Chair, your peer reviewer said we had a twelve hundred foot footprint, and that's wrong. We have twenty, we had twenty seven hundred foot footprints, and we had, we never had a chance to, you know, that's, that's an error.
Okay, let's take, I can take point two out of the equation right now. There are other, there are other points that the peer review has indicated. And the peer review is indicating that there are walls now proposed, which weren't proposed. And we went through a lot of public discussion to come to an approved plan. And I think it's very important that if we're going to be changing things that are significantly different than what was, when it was approved, then the public should be involved in the discussion. I don't want to be accused of having a conversation that really should be taking place in the public. And if that's what needs to happen, that's what should happen. And I've heard from a couple of my board members that they're figuring that there's, their sense is that this is not minor. This is significant. This is different than what was approved. Again, this board has to follow what, 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 what the marching order is, the direction that we were given. And our, and our decision was based on a site plan review. Not, 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 not a subdivision that has repetitive modifications. And that's, that's the situation that I find this in. Larry, let me ask you for any thoughts on direction now.
Well, I think we should give them an opportunity to respond. Okay, I don't, I don't think it's, as I said very candidly at the beginning, I just don't know. I don't feel I have enough information to determine if this is a minor or a major modification. Steve, I mean, if you could just go through these points and respond to them, I think that could move this along, you know. It would be a great help. I mean, item number one, approved grading is not shown. I'm assuming you can provide that fairly easily.
Absolutely, I can provide that.
The house footprints, you have a disagreement with Joe. Let's air that out. Okay, and, and to me, the big thing would be whether you're going with a larger house footprint or not. How is it going to affect the drainage, you know, and the other, other aspects of the project? The EUA boundaries are changed from the approved OSRD site plan. Well, once again, what's the effect of that? Is it, is a line being moved a foot or twenty five feet, you know? And how does that affect the overall integrity of the project? Is that going to affect the drainage, which seems to be a big issue here? It's always an issue, I guess. Same thing about the retaining walls. I don't recall whether any retaining wall is shown in the original plan.
Not, not this of you serious.
No, and, and, you know, if you could just tell us why you need them, you know, and how that's going to affect the, you know, the overall project. And the same, the same thing with item number five, the drainage swale. So I think it would only be fair to give them an opportunity to respond more fully. And we'll get something back from our peer reviewer too, I'm sure. And that will help to inform us on the decision we have to make.
I think that's an excellent recommendation, Larry. What I don't want to have is I don't want to have a discussion about this because it's, we're not into that, the format of a public hearing. But I think having the applicant have an opportunity to review it with the peer reviewer set in, and the peer review can then review that and report back to the board so that the board can have more comfort. Because people aren't feeling, from what's been discussed, that this is minor. Otherwise, they would just say they feel it's minor. People have concerns. So Martha, do we want to look at two weeks? Do we want to look at four weeks so that we can have some comprehensive appreciation of where we are with this?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's three weeks to the next meeting, isn't it?
It is actually. You're right, Steve. It is three weeks to the next meeting, April sixth. You know, partly it depends on how quickly you know, the applicant team can get there, get the drawings turned around so that Joe can respond. You know, if that's, if that's what's going to happen here.
I could have everything in, back into, back into the town by next Tuesday. I would think that would be ample time.
Okay, so we want to look at, then having a continued discussion on this in three weeks at our next hearing.
Yes.
The next
Next, next meeting. Next meeting, yes. I used the incorrect word. Thank you for correcting me, Martha.
Peter. May I speak a moment?
Sure.
So, you know, the attorneys do really well when they get together and they go back and forth on the tripartite. The easements, master deed. There's, there's a back and forth, and then they get to language that both have at work. With the peer reviewer, there's no reason in the world why he can't display to Steve the issues he's currently having and Steve to respond instead of bringing it to a meeting twenty four hours before. These are minor issues that we're talking about here in the construction world. Minor, minor. And he's, he's wrong about the square footage. Those houses too also. Those houses also have big front and back porches that are screened in. So that footprint is pretty small. It's a twenty five hundred square foot footprint. And it's a first floor master suite. So there's just not enough dialogue between those two guys. The idea is to be able, like attorneys still, they go back and forth. And they get it done. Or they agree to disagree on something that may or may not work. I had to immediately go with Dennis Hamel, who was, he works with Steve. Steve was not able to check that drawing. And I had to get it in there because the board wanted it, wanted one through four, so we moved quickly. The retaining walls are only making flatter backyards. They're very small. But there needs to be more dialogue. Instead of coming to these meetings and unrolling it like we don't understand what we're doing. That's all I ask. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it very much. That being the case, board members, any other comments? Larry?
No.
Okay, great. Woody?
No.
Great. Leslie?
No.
Great. Mary?
No.
Okay, then I would suggest that we continue this discussion in three weeks at our next meeting.
Motion to continue to four, six, twenty two for further discussion.
Second.
On the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion, Leslie?
No.
Any discussion, Woody?
No.
Any discussion, Mary?
No.
Wonderful. Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
I thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Chairs in favor. Thanks. Thanks very much, and we'll see you in three weeks.
Thank you. Hey, a quick question. Martha, I apologize for being late, but I looked at the agenda. I believe we were, we were scheduled to be on at eight. Was that, was that, was I mistaken on that?
That was, that was under the assumption that we were actually going to have the, the public hearing for the solar project and was continued. So as the agenda says at the end, all times are approximate except for scheduled public hearings.
Okay, my apologies.
And before we conclude this discussion, there was a second piece of this. And from what I understand, Martha, the, the documents were just recently received to, to the town council for review. So they have not had an opportunity to review them or to respond to those, those documents. Is that correct?
Not, not entirely. The, the the master deed, the declaration of trust and the tripartite agreement have all been, were submitted. There's been some, some dialogue back and forth, but the most recent versions, town council has not been able to finish reviewing it. So they haven't been finalized at this point.
Still in discussion.
Still in discussion, yes.
Great, wonderful. Okay. Great. That takes care of that. Thanks very much. Just wanted to button that piece up on that. Thanks, guys. Continuing on our agenda, sixty eight Green Street subdivision request from Michael De Santos for a release of lot three from Performance Covenant. Who would like to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jennifer DiCarlo. If I may, I'm an attorney with Heaney and Associates. We're in Beverly at eighty six Dodge Street. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. De Santos and Crane Properties LLC. Hopefully you can hear me. This, although it was couched as requesting a release from a covenant, this is a very, pretty small subdivision. I think it's really more akin to a minor modification. We have a bit of a conflict between the decision that was rendered by the planning board back in twenty twenty in the covenant, in the regulations. And, and really, the crux of the issue is that these folks have been working diligently with National Grid to get power out to the site. My understanding is that Mr. Robitaille, who is the electrical inspector, has work lined up for March twenty first, and we have a plan approved by National Grid. But as, you know, these big entities go, it could be anywhere from six to eight weeks before National Grid gets out there and inspects this work and powers up the pole. And so these folks are quite eager to get started, in particular on lot number three. They're looking to start their excavation work and to put the foundation in and perhaps even frame if they're permitted. But the issue really is that they've sought a building permit and they're unable to get it because what they're being told is that the, the utility, the electrical needs to be installed and the roadway finished. My understanding is that the roadway is, it's, it's graded, it's put, it's been installed up to the cul-de-sac. There's full access, then there's gravel, but they are waiting for this utility piece of it. And I took it upon myself to take a look, and I have to admit, I am fairly new to this particular project, but I did review the decision. And there's a little bit of a conflict in that it states that these two items, the road surface and the utilities are to be installed prior to occupancy permits being issued. And the covenant that was reported appears to indicate that I'm looking at it right now that that they can't sell or convey any lot or erect any permanent structure until the construction of ways and installation of municipal services is completed. So there's a slight little nuance there with municipal services. And then finally, I took a look at your regulations, section one seventeen dash, actually, strike that. Section one seventeen dash three four. And that seems to contemplate sort of simultaneous activity, utilities going in while construction commences. The bottom line here is that these folks are looking for, sort of to deviate from the covenant and to obtain their permits only as to lot three, so that they can commence their work in light of this, what may be a really significant delay with National Grid.
Thank you very much, Council. Larry, thoughts?
I just have a question. Is the olive, is the infrastructure in? You're just waiting for the electric company to flip the switch or?
I can respond to the Mike De Santos from Crane Properties. How's everybody doing? Appreciate it. Yeah, so we're, we're putting the infrastructure in starting next week. And that is all being done by Bill Robitaille. So we're digging the trench and putting all the infrastructure in, and that's all. You know, we've worked that out. We've paid National Grid. That's all being delivered and installed. So that should take about two weeks to do. It's then, you know, getting it inspected, which Bill doesn't think will take too long. It's just more, you know, that six to eight week period that they quote you to actually get them out there to flip it on. And furthermore, the bigger delay in us even just completing the roadway, which is only completed up to the cul-de-sac, is that right now, the service is going from the pole under the current construction access road to a barn that abuts our development. And part of the deed that was put in there when it was sold to us is that we need to continue to provide uninterrupted electrical service to that barn. So we can't rip up that old service until we get the new service in and then also connected to that barn. So that's what's holding us up from finishing the road. And then also, obviously, you know, what's holding us up from actually having electrical in each lot is National Grid, so.
So, so is it, is it your position? I think this might be for counsel, but is it your position that the covenant is inconsistent with the language of the decision?
I believe it is.
And, and the decision just prohibits any occupancy permit until all the everything is, all the infrastructure is in, in the road, I assume, brought to at least by your state. Is that?
Yeah, that's my position. Yeah, there's a distinction between, you know, occupancy permits and the covenant seems to, to contemplate, you know, the initial building permit.
Okay, I'm sorry. You know, I wish I had the decision in front of me. I don't.
Possibly could share my screen.
Can set you up to do that if you'd like.
Sure, I'm sure I'm not going to be very good at it, so just bear with me.
If you have trouble with it, I could pull it up.
Okay, I would probably feel better if you did. Actually, you know what? I do have it right now. There we go.
I have it too, if need be. You just have to tell me what page to go, but there we go.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
So just to go to the, to the first page, just so you know, I'm talking about this particular decision. So you can see here, this is for the sixty eight Green Street from Ulay in Newbury, Mass. Decision. It's dated December seventh, twenty twenty. And then I'm going to move down to page number, we'll start here. The bottom of page five, section C, prior to occupancy, the following shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any new dwelling unit. And so if we move down to items number two and three, I'll leave it up here on the screen, but it indicates these things have to be completed prior to application for an occupancy permit. And the covenant's your standard form D. It's, it looks like you may have updated the formatting a little bit on the one that's on the website, but it's your standard form.
Right, there were a couple of updates, and there was a particular thing in there also about the conveyance of parcel Y, I think it was, that was, that was allowed.
Right, that's the one that's going to the butter, by
That's correct.
Angle piece, if I recall.
Yeah, yeah.
And which parcel is parcel three? Is that the first on the left?
It's the first on the right, right after the barn.
Can you scroll down a little bit so we can just see item number one? Yeah, right there. And has that, has council approved the declaration?
No, those are still in the works. Perhaps you can provide an update on that.
They're in the works. You're absolutely correct.
Well, it does look like the decision contemplated all this being done before an occupancy permit. This is just, this is not a tripartite agreement, right? You don't have a bank involved.
Yeah, no, it's just the covenant on the lots, basically. May I ask a question?
Yep.
Is, so I can't remember, and you may have told me this, but are you building these houses on spec, or do you have, are they being custom-built for particular buyers?
We're building them on spec, and we will probably pre-sell one or two of them, but they were already specked out, and we've already have plans for them. So the only thing the buyers will be able to do is pick some finishes towards the end.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for screen sharing very much.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, Larry?
No, I mean, if what they're proposing is consistent with the decision, I, you know, it would seem reasonable to follow that. Maybe we need to think about amending the covenant as well, so you don't run into this again in the future.
That'd be appreciated. I mean, I'm hoping that, you know, they say, they do that what they're going to do, and we're only looking at the six to eight week period after we have this, everything installed. You know, I wish, I wish I could control National Grid, because I know this is a problem usually, so.
Leslie, any thoughts? You're muted, Leslie.
No, I have nothing.
Okay, great. Woody?
No, I don't have any comments either.
Mary?
No.
Okay. What is the feeling of the board?
May I ask another question?
Please do.
So are you specifically requesting to be released from the provision in the covenant regarding building, building permits? Or are you also asking for full release so that it could be conveyed?
This building permits. Yeah, no, we wouldn't. I mean, again, hopefully, we're not, we're not back here at another meeting because they haven't done it by the time we're ready to convey, but I hope that's not the case. I mean, it'll probably take us a good six months to finish the house, so.
Okay, so the lot itself still remains subject to the covenant?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that if the board is going to make any, any, you know, sort of motion or something.
If it's the feeling of the board that there is not a significant concern, it's a hardship, be willing to entertain that thought process and a motion as such.
Yeah, I am. I'm just trying to think what the form of the motion might be.
Okay.
Maybe something about release of lot three from the provisions of paragraph three with respect to building permit or building only.
Building permit only, yeah. It just needs to be clear that no occupancy permit can be issued.
Right, and the lot can not be conveyed.
Well, or conveyed, yes, yes, absolutely.
So let's kind of just reframe that to make sure that we're on the same page. The motion will be made as?
Like Martha said, can I move like Martha said?
I'd like you to put the pieces together, so Larry's moving in the right direction.
She's much smarter than I am.
That's not true. Perhaps a motion to release lot three from so much of paragraph three of the covenant, which restricts the erection or placement of a permanent building on the lot prior to installation of the municipal services and construction of the ways. Sorry, it's wordy.
Or how about that prohibits a building permit?
Sure. That's the important piece, is the building permit.
Right. We just wanted, understood that all we're doing is releasing, we're allowing the construction to proceed without otherwise releasing the lot from the covenant.
Bingo. Thanks, Larry.
Okay, so.
How to put that in a motion. Actually, council was pretty good.
All right, I just want, Martha, if we can repeat it, since we've had three different iterations, I think, since we started. We'll take a couple of seconds here, so we don't have to rush it.
Let's see, I'm sort of trying to parse all three of these together. I mean, I think what Jennifer suggested is probably good in that it references the exact language of the, you know, of that paragraph in the covenant, but maybe it's with respect only to the provisions regarding erection of a building on the lot, something like that.
Okay.
And does not, not release, you know, does not release lot three from any.
Okay, so Larry, this is your motion, my friend.
I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
I think we're all saying that.
I'm blanking on it. All right, I moved that we lead, that we release lot three from the covenant. So much of the covenant has prohibits the issuance of a building permit, but otherwise, lot three will continue to be subject to the restrictions in the covenant. Does that do it?
I think that hits all points. Thank you, sir. I knew you could put your attorney cap on. I knew.
Took a while.
Very good. I have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Well, second that motion.
Thank you for saying that motion, because it was a well-constructed motion with a lot of
Whatever it was.
Okay, on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Thank you, discussion, Leslie. Thank you, Woody, discussion?
None.
Thank you, Mary, discussion? Thank you. On the motion, Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote? Yes. Thank you, Mary. How do you feel?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you, the chairs in favor as well. We appreciate the cooperative effort. Good luck, and hopefully National Grid will do it and do at a time and manner.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
See what we have.
We'll let our building commissioner know that, so that when they apply for the permit, he will check with me anyway, because it's in a subdivision, but.
Beautiful. Okay, Martha, do you have any news steam on MBTA communities for us?
No, this is really more just kind of a check-in. A couple of things. I am scheduled to provide the required presentation to the select board next Tuesday, the twenty-second. Actually, town council was going to do it, but she's unable to attend. We wanted to get it done, or she can't attend that night. We wanted to get it done before the comment period ends on the thirty-first of this month. So you know, I know we've had quite a bit of discussion about it, and I didn't read the article, but I understand that West Newbury Planning Board has also been discussing it quite a bit. I will be, you know, working with, you know, probably, well, town council and people here to draft a letter, and that's going to have to go out before our next meeting. So I guess my question is, you know, are there, are there any specific comments other than what we've discussed already that anybody has regarding this? Has anybody had a chance to review the guidelines or look at the website or the video that's on the website?
Let me ask, Larry, any additional questions or comments?
Oh, I mean, I've reviewed the guidelines. I just think this is going to be a tough fit for Newbury.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leslie?
I have no discussion.
Okay, Woody, sir?
I've reviewed the guidelines as well, and I don't, I find it hard that it's going to fit in our community. And as well, we, neighboring community, West Newbury, has expressed some concerns as well. It was in the newspaper today. But I just don't see how it, how it will work with the layout that we have in town in the vicinity of the train station.
Thank you, Woody. Mary?
I agree. I think it doesn't pertain to us, but then again, I suppose it has to pertain to us in some way, but I don't see it happening. I know, I just don't see it.
So Martha, you'll be doing a presentation on Tuesday?
Yes.
To get in the comment period, and then the select board will have the opportunity to consider this as to whether this is in the best interest of the?
No, basically, I think, I mean, the legislation has been passed there. I don't know whether there was any, you know, public comment period on the legislation itself. Apparently, it's been in the works for a while, so it's really, the comment period is specifically on the, on the guidelines, the guidance, and so that, you know, that has to do with the, the area that they have determined. Well, let me backtrack. The legislation states that a district or area of reasonable size shall be designated. And the guidance says that that reasonable size shall be a minimum of fifty acres. And that's across the board for all, all communities. And further, that the density, and I think this is in the legislation, will be fifteen units per acre. And so DHCD or the guidance says that that then establishes a minimum of seven hundred and fifty units. And above and beyond that, there are percentages. So MBTA communities, in general, there's a conflict here. MBTA communities are required to designate an area that would accommodate fifteen percent of its housing stock. We have three thousand seventy-six housing units. So for us, that would be about three hundred and fifty-one, I think, something like that. But we, our baseline is seven hundred and fifty, because they've set the fifty-acre minimum at fifteen units per acre of density. So that's, you know, that's how the guidance interprets the legislation. And, and a lot of the guidance really has to do with the deadlines for action, so we have to, we have to get comments in by the thirty-first. By May second, we have to have given the presentation to the select board, and there's a form that needs to be submitted, which states, you know, are we in compliance or not in compliance? By December, we have to have an action plan. And then for us as an MBTA community, I think we don't actually have to adopt the zoning until twenty twenty-four. But there are a whole series of strict, you know, deadlines that need to be adhered to.
Okay.
So those are really the things that are up for comment as opposed to the base legislation.
All right, well, the boards had an opportunity to review, make their comments for you to then comment to the select board, and I guess after that, we'll have further discussion on this.
So I don't remember when, when the revised guidelines might be issued. I should know that. But, you know, once, once that happens, we'll certainly be having assistance from NVPC, George, sent out a letter again today, offering their assistance in developing, you know, helping us with any visuals, plans, whatever, town council, and there are other resources as well, so.
Well, I mean, that certainly, if NVPC can help us in that regard, that would be wonderful. I mean, I don't believe that we have to build seven hundred and fifty units. We simply have to have space for seven hundred and fifty units. Usably within that fifty acres that could support that.
Right, right. We have to zone for it. It doesn't mean that we need to have the infrastructure in place right now, but, you know, somebody's going to go ahead and build these. There are obviously, you know, there are infrastructure implications. You know, communities expressing concern about the impact on the school systems and traffic and all that kind of stuff. So.
And we also, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think the goal is laudable, you know, we certainly, I think it's a great thing to move towards, you know, more affordable housing and but it's, well, it's just one size just doesn't fit all. I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's the, that's certainly the biggest issue.
What was the biggest issue? I missed that.
One size doesn't fit all.
Oh, correct. I was wondering how many other communities face this conundrum. So your intent will be good, but the actual implementation of, of what is asked of you may or may not be doable, and some communities can do this quite quickly and see a way to do it, but other communities may have a lot of trouble. So I don't think we're alone here, guys.
No, no, we're not alone at all. I think, you know, different communities have different issues. Some, you know, some may meet, meet that threshold, but the housing that they have in those districts are, you know, they're age restricted, for example, because the guidance doesn't allow you to age restrict the units, and you can't exclude families. So.
Makes sense. Okay.
Has, has, I know we've had some brief discussion on this, Martha, but is there any way to calculate what the, what the loss in terms of state revenue would be to the town if we're unable to comply with the law?
Oh, good question.
I know that it means we lose a lot of grant money, but I just don't know how much.
Yeah, we lose, we lose the opportunity to apply for, you know, at least three different grant programs, and it's hard to say. I don't know how much benefit we've gotten from those grant programs so far, but, you know, certainly going forward, you know, it could potentially be significant.
So how much, right, so the next question is, how much of a hit would Newbury actually take?
Yeah, and I can't answer that question.
Have we ever used any of the three grants?
We have, and I think it's the one-stop. There are a couple of other things. Nothing that I've been involved with, the one-stop program is relatively new. But the one-stop covers a lot of ground, so infrastructure and various other, other kinds of improvements, so. the one stop covers a lot of ground, so infrastructure and various other other kinds of improvements, so.
And and we're we're an MBTA adjacent community or an MBTA community?
Yeah, we're we're considered an MBTA community because the train station is within half a mile of our.
Even though we don't have a train station ourselves.
Right, but actually, part of the parking lot for the MBTA station is in Newbury and and the perimeter of that is actually what sets our half mile boundary. So the station itself is not here, but we are. So it, you know, it's 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 fairly onerous.
A difficult fit for the this particular community as as we've discussed. Okay.
I think, you know, part part of what you know, they've been looking at it from kind of a bird's eye view. And I may say, well, you know, they've got a lot of land area, but they don't have very many housing units. So obviously, they must be able to do that. But the reason we don't have many housing units is because so much of our land is is either undevelopable or it's it's protected, some some portion of it's underwater. So, you know, we just we have some significant natural constraints.
So what is the board's responsibility with respect to this issue? What do we what do we have to do now?
So once we start working on the on the zoning and because zoning is generally initiated by the planning board, I would imagine that the the planning board would be very much involved in, you know, with town council crafting the zoning and then setting up regulations, we can set up design regulations, that kind of thing for different districts. It doesn't have to be a one size fits all within our district. So the board will also be involved in crafting crafting those.
Thank you.
Larry, do you have something else to say?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mary. I didn't mean to speak over you. I think it was George at a recent meeting had suggested contacting our legislative delegation. I wonder if it would be worth inviting them to the presentation to the select board?
They have already seen many presentations, the one that MBPC hosted on behalf of Secretary Kennealy, both Senator Tar and Representative Mira were there. So we can certainly send them copies of our letter, but I'm not sure how I don't want to say how much benefit, but.
It's a it's an exercise in futility trying to go after these politicians.
Yeah, because again, it's not it's not legislation that's being considered at this point. You know, if if we had been aware of the legislation and had an opportunity to comment on it, then definitely that would make a lot of sense. These guidelines were, you know, not not crafted by the legislators. However, in so far as they might be able to have some input, I'm very happy to, you know, send send copies of our letter.
Well, as been said stated, the intent of the law is, you know, is appreciated. It's just whether or not it can be actually instilled within our community might be more of a challenge than than doable.
Right, but ultimately, as Larry said, it doesn't require us to build the units. We have to zone for it. So then it will be, you know, up to developers who are interested in doing this. You'll have to find a way to do it.
Okay. Well, appreciate appreciate you speaking with the select board on Tuesday. Thank you, Martha. Let's see where we are agenda wise. But I think we're going to pass on the last items. Is that correct? Point in time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until next time.
Okay, that being the case, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Leslie. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Well, thank you, Larry. There's a motion and a second. Leslie, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Great. Larry, your discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
Thank you. Woody, any discussion on the motion? Oh, thank you. And Mary, any discussion?
No discussion.
Great. How do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mary, how do you feel? Thanks very much. Chairs in favor as well. Everyone, thank you very much for participating. Appreciate you all joining us. Martha, thank you very much.
And thank goodness for Martha and Larry.
Thank you, Mary.
For those guys, so. What town am I in now? I forgot.
All right, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Happy Patty's Day.